...map of the area, you can see there's a nice band of trees there between the tree, uh, due east.
Urbana, heard in Champaign-Urbana at 106.5 FM. Our evening call.
Uh, due east of the proposed Amulso Co. plant. And I just wish to sort of second what Mr. Charlo just said. If the lights were kept low enough and as many of the trees retained, if you look at the map of the area, you can see there's a nice band of trees there between Harold and, and we live opposite one another, across from Lincoln Avenue, due east of the plant. And if the trees were to remain and the lights kept low, it would mean a lot to us living there because when lights go on, like when they did the transfer station, in the wintertime those lights are really annoying. In the summer it's fine because there's lots of trees and you barely see them. So that certainly helps the situation a great deal. So we would just respectfully request that could be accomplished.
Mr. Smythe?
Could you quickly describe for me the kinds of lights that are being used by the transfer station? Are they the kind that stick out the bottom or rounded, you know, so that they have a lot of side air, uh, light pollution? Or are they the flat kind that are supposed to go just straight down?
Oh, golly. I never actually looked at there. You'd have, I'd have to drive over to it to see there, you know, how the road curves around there. I mean, they're not so bad. The, they, when the city or the county changed that road there, they also put in two or three other big lights there that are just, I think they're just big round things that just sort of glare all around.
Uh-huh, okay.
And they're, you can see them a long way away.
Okay, thank you.
And since we're only an eighth of a mile or so from the proposed plant, that's the closest, they'd be, they would be annoying.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Okay, we have an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement, tract of land contiguous to the northwest corner of the city limits, adjacent to the Canadian National Railway, in its plan case 2005-A-05A, Amulso Co. Incorporated.
Actually, I can present a staff report for all of these cases simultaneously since they're interconnected.
Do you want us to do all of them in one motion or separate motions?
You should take separate motions, but I think the presentation and discussion would probably benefit from omnibus consideration. There are, rather than going through the many different detailed memos that Paul Lindahl prepared before he got worn out and went on vacation, I'll just sort of generally go over this string of actions. And I know there was some discussion at the previous committee meeting as well as discussion at Plan Commission previously. And if you were to look at your location map, perhaps in the first memorandum, that would help in describing this set of actions. Um, the first case is for an annexation agreement which includes a rezoning and a special use permit contained within it. And that annexation agreement is for the property described on the location map as tract A, uh, which is not currently in the city, um, but has been acquired by Amulso Co. and is proposed to be a portion of a tract for relocation of part of our operations which currently are on West University Avenue in Urbana. The first case addresses annexation agreement issues including, um, conformance with our comprehensive plan which does show, um, future industrial use in this area, uh, response to the LaSalle criteria that we look at for all rezoning cases, and in addition, as was mentioned, special use permit conditions, since a portion of the facility would be on the southernmost portion of tract A adjacent to lot 204 shown on the location map. The second case involves the actual annexation of tract A. So of course you'd want to have your agreement in place and then the actual annexation would be considered for, um, to come in place inside the city effective tomorrow. And that is for that 13.843 acre tract of land shown as tract A. That's the item that went to committee before all the, all the other items. The third case is for a final plat, and this is for, um, what's shown on the location map as lot 204. This area was preliminarily platted previously. It's part of the North Lincoln Avenue Industrial Park and is currently owned by, uh, University Construction or MACC. The reason it is being platted as lot 204 at this time is to allow for purchase by Amulso Co. of lot 204. This question came up previously, well, why doesn't this also include tract A as one lot? And it will, it will have to come back as a replat, but before Amulso Co. can, um, purchase the property legally from University Construction, it needs to be completed its plating process as lot 204. So you will see a subsequent case. You'll also see, um, the portion of the railroad frontage south of tract A, you will see, um, come into part of that replat to facilitate a form of land trade to University Construction which owns lands to the east of that railroad frontage. So this is a case where this excess railroad frontage, uh, was purchased by one party and will benefit both that party as well as adjacent industry. So the memorandum for that case recognizes that there were previously waivers allowed in that preliminary plat. There are no additional waivers requested and the final plat is consistent with that preliminary plat. Therefore, this is an action that did not need to go to the Plan Commission. The fourth item is to allow a special use permit for the same operations to be conducted on lot 204, which is currently within the city. So is not part of the annexation agreement, special use permit. And again, it needs to review the same criteria for special use permits and has a number of conditions applied or requested to be applied to it. To, um, review what's being permitted by a special use permit, you can, uh, look at one of the exhibits which shows the site plan. And we've worked to make sure we have the latest and best version of the site plan, a couple of different versions in the Plan Commission packet. And the current site plan reflects a lot of the mitigation strategies that Amulso Co. will be using as required by the best practices in the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. So there, for example, will be a berm around the entire project site. I'm looking at this exhibit, which shows a site plan covering both the southern portion of tract A and lot 204. And you'll see basically what's proposed is a very small office, very small parking lot, and four major tanks for their operations, and then a drive area. We've also had review, ongoing review by our fire department, and the fire chief is requesting improved access to the tanks to the north, and that will be necessary to meet our fire code. In the special use permit ordinance, there are a number of conditions that were recommended by staff and by the Plan Commission, and these are to protect, um, impacts of the operation, ensure consistency with other rules and regulations, including those by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, ensure, um, that the operations are limited to those described on the application, ensure general adherence to the site plan, and other conditions contained in the ordinance. This, uh, this series of steps, uh, with the exception of the annexation itself and the final plat, were reviewed at Plan Commission at a recent meeting, and they recommended by a vote of six to one for approval. We have representing here tonight from Amulso Co., Scott Yates and Jim Green, as well as a representative from University Construction, John Piesker, who can help in, answer any questions of a technical nature.
Are there any questions? Mr. Smythe?
No, go ahead. I'm trying to figure out one. My questions, um, I, okay, I, I have a couple of questions. I'll start and then might come back to me. The, is it, is there a historical precedent for requiring a special use permit that a, um, that a petitioner, uh, clean up a site after they're finished with it? So that basically we won't have a situation where we have a site that is turned into a brownfield that, you know, may be vacated in the future if the company chooses to, to leave, or the company, you know, 50 years down the line may not exist anymore? And we would have a situation where we'd have a polluted site that then the city would potentially take up and mitigate the environmental consequences and turn it over to someone else and the taxpayers would end up paying for that? Is there, has there been discussion about that kind of thing? Is there a precedent for us considering now with a special use permit? So that we're not basically, you know, stuck holding the environmental, uh, rescue bag?
I think those situations refer to sites that were developed previous to current environmental regulations. That currently there's basically cradle to grave responsibility by industries to take responsibility for these wastes, and this is why these permits are so rigorously followed by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. I don't think that this is a future brownfield. The superfund sites and the brownfields are relics of past poor practices that preceded our, our current environmental rules. Um, where we do see takedown provisions or bonds posted or when there are unusual land uses proposed that may or may not succeed in the future and could leave, um, a detriment to the community that could cause costs to, um, remove. For example, when Champaign County reviewed a wind turbine proposal, they were concerned about removal and required a bond for the removal. I think in this case, um, we fully expect compliance with environmental rules and would not be looking that this would be a future polluted site. And I'm sure the industry representatives may have other responses. So this was not something that we felt would be necessary.
That's all for now.
Mr. Smythe?
There's maybe a question for the representatives here. I guess I'm very sympathetic with, uh, with the, uh, well, first, I, I very much appreciate that this, this project is, is taking place and I very much encourage its relocation to along the railroad tracks. I think it's a very good fit, uh, and, and very supportive of it. Uh, I'm also very concerned about light pollution in general, uh, in the communities. And, uh, as a, as the spouse of a, of an amateur astronomer, I hear about it all the time. So, uh, I'm very sympathetic with the neighbors who have, have addressed in, uh, the lighting concern. So I'm wondering if you would be willing to accept, uh, some kind of, uh, additional language, uh, in the special use permit that addresses, uh, uh, the lighting issue. Something along these lines is what I have in mind. Uh, "The owner agrees to the use of directional lighting designs so that the site lighting does not extend beyond the property described herein, and that additional screenings such as large trees and other plantings, uh, be used to minimize light pollution beyond the property." Is that an acceptable, uh, condition or not?
Yes.
Yes? There may be some wording that needs to be adjusted here. I don't know if it, it fits in exactly. I'll let Libby take a look and you can share it.
Jim Green, one of the lawyers for Amulso Co., this is Scott Yates. And, uh, I was sitting there wondering, how would you ever word, uh, something like that? And you, you did it. So, uh, apparently, uh, Mr. Yates doesn't seem to think that's a problem. But, you know, I would point out that, you know, you see gas stations that have big lights and, uh, you know, they're trying to attract customers, and obviously this is not that type of operation, so.
We would spotlight, like, certain areas. We're not going to project the light out. We're going to light up the, the truck loading area and the rail unloading area, and the light would be projected down for the workers. Like Jim says, we're not advertising, it's just safety.
Would, would you like to see the language here, just real quickly?
Sure.
Read the original offer, then?
Yeah.
I will.
I think they should keep it true. As many as, you should go with them. They make us good partners.
What if we were to say, uh, the tax to be on the property to the east, that's where the residences are? Because then you'd be basically the west, uh, you've got railroad tracks.
Oh, see, oh, right, okay.
Subdirectly to the south, it's all heavy and industry.
Yes? Could we, uh, pass this motion with the intent to, uh, pass with these words between Charlie and?
Yeah, this is also the question.
And I have one more question.
Okay. Did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Um, I attended the planning meeting in which some of this information was first presented. And, um, there's two things. And one thing, we came up just recently, um, by, um, was it Ms. Atkins who, uh, asked the question of, um, whether trees that are on the property now that, um, are between the residence to the east and the lot 204, and I guess perhaps it's tract A, would be retained. So I guess what I'm wondering, I haven't, I haven't driven out to see this, uh, where these trees are located specifically. But as I recall, at this time, there are trees that grow along the, the railroad, um, right-of-way in tract A and the long extension that goes north and northeast. I understand that there's a, a fair grove of, um, 20 or 30-year-old trees along that, in that property. And at the, during the planning session, that was brought up, and the question was, you're only using the southern part of tract A and that the rest, I believe, Amulso Co. indicated would be basically retained unused or unaffected at this time. So the point, my first question is, um, can you explain to me, um, whether the northern part of tract A, north of lot 204, will be developed or clear cut or in any way changed from the current, uh, how it looks today?
No, we're not going to do anything with it.
Never? It's going to stay basically in stasis or untouched at this point? Do you have plans in the future to do other developments there?
No.
Okay. Um, and the second question was, as I recall, um, you seem to be, um, open to planting a row of trees on the east side of lot 204, um, next to or in front of the berm as a kind of a, a visual screen or shield? And this, this came up actually at this point in the conversation about, um, vegetative shielding of light. Those, uh, there's no suggestion on the site diagram that I can see here of any kind of landscaping along the eastern edge of the property, but would you be, uh, open to considering some tree scaping on that side?
Yeah, we, we plan on doing that anyway.
You did?
It's not part of the site plan as yet, but we plan on putting trees up along that, that eastern part of the property.
Because I think that would help mitigate some of the light spillover and also shield some of the operations and the equipment from the residences who I realize don't live immediately next to the plant. And there is one more lot that has an industrial designation to its immediate east, but that would be a very considerate, um, step. Do you think that we would see, uh, some kind of, uh, descriptive information in, when the, the plat comes back and the, uh, replotting of the lot 204 might, uh, appear before council?
Um, yeah, I can, I can have that put in there.
That'd be appreciated.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Bowers-Sachs?
Yeah, I just had, uh, Mr. Yates, a few questions about the health issues. From everything I understand from the Planning Commission hearings and all, this is a safe operation and the emissions are, um, maybe a nuisance problem and not a health problem. So I just wanted, on the record for the people of Urbana, for them to hear a little bit about that. So am I correct that it, there have been these odor issues that have been resolved in the last number of years and that that is entirely a nuisance problem and not a health issue?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't use the word nuisance, but, uh, there were some concerns by neighbors south of the current plant, at least 10 years ago, and, uh, those, uh, problems were addressed and Amulso Co. went above and beyond anything that was required by the LMIP PPA. And of course, you know, Michael Pollak is the chairman of your Plan Commission, and he happened to be the alderman from the ward, uh, contiguous to the Amulso Co. plant. He was satisfied at that time as a council member with, uh, the remediation plan they put into effect at that time. And they're a good neighbor. I mean, they had to spend thousands of dollars they really weren't required to spend. And my understanding is that neighbors who, I mean, are just right next to the current plant are not complaining, you know, today. And the plant that'll be built north of town will be substantially similar. So even if somebody lives a quarter of a mile away, I, we're not anticipating any kind of an odor problem. There's no other kind of problem. But I guess when you use the word nuisance, uh, I, I don't think that's, in all due respect, an appropriate word, because I don't think they're a nuisance in any way whatsoever. Want to add anything to that?
Well put. It's, there's been many studies done on, on the asphalt fumes and, and to date, uh, there's been nothing that's a health issue. It's, it's just an odor.
Ms. Stevenson?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I had a follow-up question. Yeah, thank you, very good. And, um, you know, I also think some, some neighbors are concerned, but you're right, the, the past location was within 200 feet of a neighborhood, and I really am pleased by this move because it's, you know, it's a better industrial location and isn't right next to a neighborhood. You, you did point out that at the new location, you'll be using the same vapor recovery system, I think that's what it was called, as at the past location for, for a similar or substantially similar amount of odor control. Uh, just wanted to make sure that was correct as well?
Yeah, we'll be using, the, the, the technology changes for odor control on a, an annual basis. We're going to take advantage of whatever is available at this time. I don't know that it's going to be exactly what's at the, the existing site, because there's, there's other, um, ways of treating the odor that are a little bit better that we're going to look into.
And are you amenable to, thank you very much. I'm, I was really glad to hear that. I know you won't be as close to as many people, but the fact that you do the same amount of odor control and that you're putting effort into that is really important. I'm wondering if you're amenable to us including that as a condition, um, for the special use, that, that a substantially similar level of odor control, um, such as a vapor recovery system would be used here as at the current operation at 705 East University?
Uh, I wouldn't have any problems with that. We don't know exactly what it's going to be. I couldn't put it down, you know, specifically what system we're going to choose.
Okay.
You know, I, I wouldn't have any issues with, you know, indicating that we're going to put in, uh, an odor control for the site.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yes, okay. Any other questions? Did you want to change the wording, Mr. Smythe?
Uh, well, no, I was going to, um, I think the first, there are five pieces to this. The first four are the ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of the annexation agreement, the rezoning, uh, annexing, and then the final plat division. I'm reading the wrong one, oops. I'm reading the wrong one.
The revised one, okay?
Revised, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah. We, okay. Items number two, three, and four are the annexation agreement, annexing the territory, and the final division plat. I would, I would move those three as an omnibus.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then I'll, separately, we can introduce the additional site conditions to, to the fourth, the special permits. I'd like to vote the special permit separately.
And I would second that, the two, three, and four. A motion by Mr. Smythe and seconded by Ms. Barnes to include, um, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement, um, an ordinance, annexing certain territory to the city of Urbana, and an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat. And these are all for plan, no, the first two are for plan case 2005-A-05A and 05B. And the third one is plan case 1952-S-05. So do we need a roll call on this? Would the clerk please, or is there any other discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
What's, okay, plan case 1954-D-M-05?
It's, it's included in the annexation agreement. There's no need for a separate map amendment?
It's in the revised, um, agenda. That's been eliminated. So we have three items that we're voting on now in one omnibus motion. All those in favor? No, sorry. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers-Sachs?
Yes.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing? Yes. Okay, next. An ordinance approving a special use permit to allow an asphalt blending, storage, and distribution plant located at 1001 West Saline Court in the IN Industrial Zoning District in its plan case number 1952-SU-05, Amulso Co. Incorporated.
Okay, so moved.
Second. Either, is there any further discussion?
I'd, I'd move to amend the special permit by adding item number, or condition number eight, uh, on page three, to read as follows. "The owner agrees to the use of directional lighting designs so that site lighting does not extend beyond the property described herein, particularly with respect to residential directions, and that additional screenings such as large trees and other plantings be used to minimize light pollution beyond the property." So moved.
Second.
I'd second.
Okay, that's, um, an amendment made by Mr. Smythe and seconded by Ms. Barnes. Um, Ms. Chenoweth?
I have a question for staff regarding the language. Dr. Tyler, do you feel that that language makes it clear that tree plantings will be required and that they will be required along the, along the berm and, uh, blocking residential areas? I'm just concerned because I feel like, I understand the spirit of the motion, I, I support the spirit of the motion. I just want to make sure that, uh, since we haven't had our attorney look over, and I know you're not an attorney, but, um, since we haven't had our attorney look over this language, I'm concerned that it's, doesn't actually require tree planting, I mean, that they could plant, not that you would, but planting one tree might satisfy the, the requirements of this particular language.
Well, it talks about minimizing light towards residential directions, which is to the east, but it doesn't specifically say plant trees along the east border of lot 204. They've said that they will do that and we remember that and will require that, but to find it further, you probably, you'd need to make that explicit.
Just quickly, because I, I did not visit the site, and that's always the danger of not visiting a site before voting on it, um, there's a lot of maps, they're very helpful. But if, if we were to require locations of tree plantings, what's your recommendation to make sure that we, that we, um, take care of those residential areas? Would it be just the east side of lot 204, or would it also be to, um, require the preservation of existing trees, for example, at the top of tract A, if that's even in the, um, I guess this is the final plat, and the final plat just has to do with lot 204, is that correct? And that we'll have a different plat in the future for tract A?
The, um, yes, but that's a subdivision plat, not a site plan. One thing you could do is, kind of a favorite condition, is to require a landscape plan for screening and tree preservation, subject to review by the zoning administrator in consultation with the city arborist.
I think that's what.
And we would, we know in the site
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the motion carries now. You want to have another amendment?
Yes, I make the motion that the owner agrees to add condition number nine, that the owner agrees to submit a landscape plan to the zoning administrator for review by the administrator and the city arborist.
Is there a second?
I would second that motion.
Mr. Roberts seconds the motion. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Roberts.
This plot, when it's combined with tract A, is going to be replotted, is that correct, Libby? And would come back to us, and would we be able to then see, verify that this has occurred at that time? Is that the right, appropriate time to look at that?
As an informational item, but the plat really only deals, according to our subdivision ordinance, with the layout of the land, not the use. So it's attaching one parcel to another parcel and making sure the roads are still working in our subdivision ordinance is still working. We could, as part of that case, give you an update on the site plan, but really, the zoning permission, which you're doing now, is the right time to apply conditions for the development.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, we're voting on this amendment to add condition number nine for a landscaping plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. And now we will vote on the ordinance.
Excellent.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to add one more condition, and that was the condition about the odor control. My motion would be to add condition 10, that the activity allowed by the special use permit on the site employ a similar level of odor control as at 705 East University. That's my motion.
And I would second that.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Bowers-Sachs and seconded by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion?
Yes, real quickly. I would submit a friendly, similar or better than.
Yes, that's perfectly fine.
Similar or better odor control. Any other discussion? All those in favor of this amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Okay, now we're going to vote on this ordinance, which has been amended three times. All those in favor of the ordinance for a plan case number 1952-SU-05, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call?
Oh, this is a roll call?
Is that correct?
The amendments don't have a roll call, but the ordinance does?
Yes.
All right, we'll have a roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers-Sachs?
Yes.
Ms. Schenowith?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item.